To reconvene?
Yes, please.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. Jeff, you have prepared in our document a kind of guideline for a discussion. Do you want to lead the discussion maybe? Okay, all right.
As I mentioned, I kind of met with admin staff and we were talking about different things and so we just kind of set up on the whiteboard and thought, how do we keep this moving along? What do we need to put to bed so that we can go to the next stage? And how are we going to get it sorted out? So we don't have to have every small answer to all these tonight, but really it's starting with, how do we put a parameter on the size and scope of this project? Because it grows a lot and it changes. And I recognize we're still trying to figure out what it's going to be. That's fine. But when, at what point do we say this is what it is so that we can start to solidify some of those other numbers that were ambiguous in the previous conversation on the budget?
Okay, Counselor Coates, you want to go for it?
I think we've all talked to-
I'm sorry?
... around a lot of this stuff, right? And I think the size of it is going to depend on the donations. You got in there like a basement. And again, that all depends on how much the donation is going to be. There's talk of a bowling alley or something. I don't know.
So we're going back to bowling alley?
Back, no, no, no.
I just started addressing the questions, Mayor.
Yeah, that'd be a good way to do it.
Please, somebody take it away. I think that Jeff is asking a question. Maybe you have the answer to that. I don't know.
Okay. The size of the facility, Jeff, is the last footprint that we showed you. If that works out to fifteen thousand.
I think it was fifteen two.
Okay. Okay. Talk of the basement. All right. There was talk of a bowling alley. Now it's like, no. It would appear that there's an opportunity for an entrepreneur in town to do something like that and we don't want to get in their way. So now they, the whole point of the basement is that it could be made if they raise enough money, right? And then Gibbs been approached by the archery club. They're saying, we keep getting kicked out of the basement of the civic center. We're tired of that. We want our own place. Can you do something for us? He's like, if we raise enough money, we can do anything. But that footprint, fifteen thousand two hundred, I think you can kind of, that's it, right? The basement thing, that's negotiable depending upon the money. What type of confirmation is required for partners in order to proceed and by when? I would like to make a suggestion that perhaps Counselor Brown and I'll cheerlead. Make an appointment with Westwind School Division to go make a pitch again as a partner. So that would be a recommendation that I would make to try and get them on board as another partner.
Okay.
Having said that, excuse me. The figure that we have talked about in the past is only going to work if there is a public-private partnership. I know you have concerns about the cost of the facility. And like Gibb has gone to great lengths and I applaud him for it to get quotes. So he knows what the building costs are. He knows what the concrete costs are. He knows what the cost is to erect it. He knows what, based upon the partnership where he's talked to contractors and said, you have to allow for some in-kind work by volunteers in this facility. Excuse me. So that doesn't help you in terms of the bottom line, but basically with the Pickleball Association as kind of the driving force behind the private funds and others is that the town's commitment is this. Anything over and above that, we have to raise. Okay? So in terms of partnerships, I guess you could say it's us, it's the county, whatever they're doing and whatever the Pickleball Association is willing to raise. And then if Westwind School Division comes on, that's great. If not, I guess we'll proceed without them. But this kind of takes me to the financing part of that. And this is something that I need to clarify with you, Jeff. So if Gary Selk wants to make a contribution to the rec facility, now you told me I can walk into the town office right now, I can stroke you a check for whatever my donation is and you'll give me a tax receipt.
Correct.
So can we put that out there? Can the Pickleball Association put that out there and say, if you want to stroke a check, go to the town office, stroke your check, they'll give you a tax receipt? Now, I know you have questions in here about, you know, what sort of contribution does that look, how big-
Yeah.
-is it going to be? I mean, obviously they're trying to approach some people, some corporations, some whatever, to make a big substantial contribution to that. I guess our question is, well, I don't know that a corporation is going to be looking for a tax receipt. Are they?
Usually if it's cash, yeah.
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 So help me out there. If you have a corporate entity that says, we're giving you a half million bucks, can you stroke them a tax receipt?
Yep, if it's cash.
If it's cash.
Yep. So what we ran into, I'll use the soccer park as an example, Counselor. We had, it was boss sod at the time-
Cannot be.
-who said, well, we're, we've given you a quote for eighty thousand dollars worth of sod. We're going to come in and do it for fifty. Can we get a tax receipt for thirty? And the answer was no. Because your, your, first of all, your quote was reasonably arbitrary. So you could have said it was two hundred and eighty thousand and you wanted a tax receipt for, you know, a whole bunch. So that, in that case, it was no. We ran into it with, I think Ken Wild was the same thing to want to reduce his costs. And, and so we said, no, we have to pay you the quote and then you can turn around and donate the cash.
Right.
Okay.
So that was fine.
But if a corporate entity comes in and says, we're going to give you a half million bucks. Here's your tax receipt.
If we are the recipient of the cash, then we can give a receipt for it, yes.
But it has to come to the, to the town.
Yeah.
Okay. So the, the other question, Jeff, is do we hold that in trust? Because their concern is, we can start fundraising amongst our members and others, but we don't want you in three months or six months from now saying, yeah, we're not doing this.
Yeah, sure. It's fair. So we don't hold it, oh, we can, by the way. We could hold it in trust. We don't hold it in trust per se. We simply have it in, there's a, we have a specific GL account that we can track what came into it. So we know who and the amounts-
Okay.
-as it accumulates.
So then, for whatever reason, and I don't really want to dwell on it much, but if we knew, if this gets nuked, then we would stroke checks to everybody and give them back their money and say, we need your tax receipt back, then?
Well, there's that too, yeah. Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's a very good point. Thank you for clarifying that. It's very interesting.
Because they do want to start down that road of having people contribute.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I could add one thing, and you might be able to speak to this, Counselor Selk, I asked about partners and by when. And the timing thing's interesting and difficult at the same time. The reason I put a timing piece in is if you as a counselor are going to forego a whole bunch of things in order to accommodate this, then how long do we wait and see if we have those partners that make it possible? So let's say we cancel ten line items that we were going to do to find the funding. Are they just perpetually canceled while we wait? You know, do we wait most of twenty twenty-one? I know it's not the intent, by the way. I get that.
But I have a proposal though, Jeff. So we can pass an interim budget at the end of the year, right? Or in March, or when is it?
It's the end of the year.
You ideally can pass your, your budget, so everything can go ahead for spending.
Okay.
You have a mill rate time. When you set the mill rate, you have a chance to tweak it a bit, but ninety-nine percent of the stuff's usually done by December.
Okay. So if we were to say, in order for us to get a better idea of where we're at with the cost on this, we need to know what your financial contributions are from your, whoever you're approaching by the end of the year.
Yeah, and like I said, you have another go at it, say, in April for mill rate, but, you know, that, that buys a little bit of time.
Yeah, but we're, we're operating on the pretense that we're going to do this without raising taxes. That's, am I-
That's the whole-
Can I just, I've had a couple of people in the community talk to me with a little bit of gossip that, you know, their taxes are going to go up five hundred dollars a year for this facility. And I, so I asked this person, can you let me know who said that? And they said, well, I, I can't really, you know, say that. But that's kind of the rumor mill that's going around. And I'm concerned about that because if we want this to go forward and we allow our community to come in and talk and vote about this, it's going to get defeated because people are worried about their taxes going up, right?
Or we could say Citizen LLPOF is saying that it's going to go up by five hundred bucks.
Took me a second, but I got it. I'm with you.
Well, that is an interesting figure.
And I don't know where that-
Because when that figure-
That's pretty steep.
Well, that is steep, but that is steep.
Well, that figure is, cannot even be near the right amount.
I told that person that that's not the intent of the council to make sure that they're-
I mean, you know, I don't really know where they got that from.
Yeah, I can speak, we'll talk about public engagement a little more. I've had a couple of different people come to me at the office and say, we're dead opposed to this. We want to get in front of council. And I've been asking them, what are you opposed to?
Yeah.
You know, we need to establish that first. So hold on, hang tight. And then once we get some numbers, both capital and operational, you'll know what you're opposed to. But right now, you don't, you're not sure. And it's the rumor and innuendo, right?
And that's the danger, right?
Our direction from the office, we met this morning as a staff, and I said, look, this is going to start coming up more and more. And there's, there's a couple of groups that are planning to organize to protest the, the facility. And so I just said, until you know what you're mad about, then let's just hang on because we're going to get there for sure. And you may not be as upset, or you may, you might, I don't know. But they may not be as upset as they think they will be.
I mean, how can they even have a figure when we don't even have a cost?
Right, that's, that's been our message, Jeff.
I mean, honestly, anybody with a brain will know that without a cost, you cannot put even an estimate.
Yeah. You didn't use the brain.
Well, I mean, I think, I think we can-
Well, I shouldn't say that.
-out there that the, the latest iteration on the cost of the facility is one point two, right? But again, we've talked about this. There's implications with respect to volunteer help and all of that sort of stuff. So, you know, but we've got hard costs on the, what the building is, hard costs on how much it will cost to erect it, hard, hard costs on how much the concrete will be and the dirt work and stuff like that. Everything else, there's, there's a little bit of movement there because we got to figure out how much is going to come from people volunteering their time. And then, again, you know, I think that people are, there, there's a number of people that are willing to start contributing like tomorrow if they put it out there. So, so as far as that, you said, is there a financial contribution threshold from partners? Saying that we shouldn't go beyond a certain level of contribution?
So this one's a little bit different. What, what my thought process there was is if, if the, we saw this on a much smaller scale, I remember with the water slides. So initially the council was saying, look, until the community raises fifty percent, we're not going ahead, right? So once fifty percent of the project is raised by the community, then we'll make with the other fifty percent. So that was a, a community threshold. We didn't end up doing that, by the way, as an aside. It was a smaller portion from the community, but that's all I was throwing out is if, you know, it's, are we going to have to see that all the rest of this is fully funded, whatever that number is, two hundred thousand? Well, according to my budget, one point six million. But whatever that number is, does it have to be fully funded before a shovel turns? That, that's part of the question.
Okay, so that's good. Because I have a question for you as well, Jeff. Is there anything wrong with members of the Pickleball Association going to some of the major people that we do business with? Like Tall Strick Construction or McNally Construction or Southwest Concrete or NMAX or Fortis and saying, this is what we have in mind. Could you make a contribution?
Fortis does that in different community.
Yeah. So is there anything wrong with it? Probably not. Am I terribly comfortable with someone going around saying they're from the town and because you're a vendor, we'd like you to support us?
No, it's not, they're not going to represent the town.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I-
As a citizen?
As a citizen, as a member of this association that's fundraising for this recreation. I mean, I look at it this way. I would rather them do it than me as a counselor or any one of us as counsel or even administration going to them saying, hey, you know what, I think you should pony up.
Yeah.
I'd rather they do it because then it's an independent third party and they can say, yeah, we'll help or no, pounce help. I like that. I like the arms-length distance between council and administration and-
Yeah, it must be. I agree.
Am I okay with that, Mayor? Do you understand where I'm coming from?
I understand that as long as not as, as long as none of us involved.
Nope. And that's, I-
You know.
I think I, I have made it clear to them that council will have to deliberately take a step back from any sort of thing like that, and administration for that matter, because it's not appropriate for us to be approaching any of those people that we do business with.
Okay. To give you a sense, when we have the power committee and we're looking for, for donations, we go to big corporations to try to get money. And we manage to get a fair chunk of it. But we don't do it on behalf of the town. It's done on behalf of the power committee, which was made up of county member and town member. So with his own budget, with his own account. And we, in fact, did not give them tax receipts.
But donations to events aren't, aren't receivable because they're getting advertising for that. It's a different monster.
Exactly.
But if, if this association just said, listen, we're doing this as a private, not-for-profit organization and we're trying to assist the town in building this facility, would you be able to make a contribution? And yes, it's tax receivable for your company. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. All right, because-
If it's not called a donation, because the minute it's called a donation-
Contribution.
No, 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 they can, they can donate.
Okay, help me, help me understand the tax implication.
So the intent is, for example, if the power comes by and says, hey, you can buy a spot in the program. We're going to put your logo. We're going to announce you at everything. I'm buying an advertisement. I'm buying marketing. I'm not donating.
All right.
Um, but if I just say, come to the town for, we, we get it all the time.
And just give, give you the money.
Here's a hundred dollars cash for this thing.
Right.
That's just a cash donation.
Right. And you get a tax receipt for it.
Yeah, you get a receipt for it. And sure, they're on the plaque at the end or whatever. That's fine.
Don't need enough to other-
But, but it wasn't a marketing effort.
Okay. All right. So that's interesting. That's a good difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is strictly seeking a donation for a facility. And then, I don't know, do we, do we tell them, like you said, at the end, we'll put a banner or a plaque with all the major contributors on it?
Thank you. You always got to do those kind of things. You know, you got to recognize your contributor.
The authority does. It won't be any different.
Yep.
We did in the, in the library. We've got it at the front.
Exactly my point, Counselor, is that if we get a major contributor, we'll name the whole bloody building after them.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody that don't need it, money's got a little plaque there. You can go in the foyer of the library and you can see it.
But in this case, you had a major contributor and you named the library after him. We would do the same thing with this. You had a major contributor, we'll name the whole bloody building after him.
Want to call it the NMAX Center? Sure, go ahead.
Yeah. If NMAX wants to contribute that much money. Okay.
Okay. We've touched, we've talked financing quite a bit through the previous budget discussion. We'll work through that. I just wanted to bring to council's attention the borrowing restriction. So under the MGA, what, well, let me back up. One of my fears with a project like this is that we think we have a good number. We run into things, we run up short of money, and we have a discussion about how do we finish it? Say we need two hundred, three hundred grand to finish it. I want you to be aware right now that if we go ahead, it's not through borrowing. So you cannot commence a project that will require borrowing if the borrowing bylaw isn't completed. And the reason is, is they don't want you to be in a position where you've got something that's sitting there and needs a million dollars. And now your community feels like, well, what do we do? Our back's against the wall here. They want the funding-
Upfront.
-sorted out upfront and decided. So the MGA does not allow for us to borrow after the first shovel turns on this. We just need to be aware of that and be confident going in with the numbers. It's just one of those other reasons why I want to be comfortable with the numbers. Because we don't want to be short.
Okay. But Jeff, could a, um, bylaw be created with the word if needed?
I suppose you just have to have the public hearing on that, yeah?
Yeah. Because like you said, I know you, you basically indicated, Jeff, that pitchforks and lanterns are already starting to, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, they're sharpening and lighting, yeah.
Okay. We'd like to sort of calm that whole section down, saying, it's not our intent to borrow. It's not our intent to raise taxes.
Yeah.
It's our intent to fund internally and then it's our intent to fundraise, right?
Yep. We just, before we give the green light, we want to make sure that financing looks good because we lose the opportunity to borrow.
Right.
That's all.
Can I just ask a question then? So I know we're going to try and do this on the fly and we're going to do work in kind and that kind of stuff. Is there any way for us to get a second or a third party to say, to do an assessment or an evaluation or a bid as to how much it would cost for someone to do this? Like, I know, I know you've got someone that's eager to do that, but I just feel, I know what it's like to build a house. I've done three of them and I've general contracted all of them. And you go in with what you kind of think you are going to do and then your wife changes her mind or you change your mind on the flooring or whatever. No, I'm just saying.
Never change your mind, right?
You didn't change your mind once, Counselor. I've changed my mind lots of times. I'm just saying that five percent contingency plan doesn't really-
Yeah.
-cut it. And I just wonder if, if we had other eyes on the project saying, this is what we think it could be that would, might help us.
Okay. Here's what I was going to suggest, okay? And this might sort of ease everyone's, whatever, mind. Perhaps what would work best for all of us, Jeff, is if Gibb came and talked to Brandon and you sat down and broke everything down in his, what he's been, all the quotes that he's got and where he's coming from with the numbers. And then, you know, Brandon can take a hard look at it or whoever. But like I said, Gibb can explain it. Like when, when I look at it, I look at it and I think he's, he's being reasonable in that he's, he's chased numbers for a month and a half now from different companies. And so, you know, I think he's done the best he can to try and come up with a solid number. But maybe there's an opportunity for him to come and sit down with you guys and say, here you go.
Yeah. That, that's where these projects are just a little more logistically complicated because in a, in a straight contracting move, you put it out to bid, you have your numbers. And then you have a performance bond on that bid.
Yep.
And you have change order rules in place with the contractor. And if they messed up somewhere, it's not your problem, right? So you alleviate some of that because you have a bid, you have a good contract, you proceed with performance bonds in place. And, and that's, so that's the technical, but it isn't the grassroots method. Let's put it that way, right? You, you sacrifice what, to try and keep those costs down. You sacrifice that, but you expose yourself to some risk.
Right.
You really do. Because it's not reasonable to ask Gibb for a performance bond when he's volunteering his time. For, yeah, a, a, a seven-figure project.
Right. And, and I guess what, you know, I guess what we all have to sort of come to agreement on or be comfortable with is the fact that this is a grassroots project. It's not your traditional, here's the pool, put it out for bid, here's the bid, let's go forward. It's more the partnership between the town and we'll call it the Pickleball Association and the county and so.
So can I ask something? I'm trying to understand then, what is the difference between the golf course association that's trying to get a partnership and that has developed an MOU? And, and you're, I mean, it's gone nowhere yet, but it gives a little bit more of the parameters of who does what and who regulates what. Is that something that maybe we should be looking at in order to answer some of those questions? And maybe narrow down the different questions that we may have regarding that partnership? Would that be something that would be useful for us to even explore?
It, it's possible. I think in, in Delbert's case, he wants the MOU in place so that everybody knows exactly what they're doing and who's, who. And our, in this case, the Pickleball Association is saying, um, we are comfortable with whatever arrangement council's comfortable with. You know? And if we're comfortable with this partnership, let's-
But, okay, so I'm going to ask the same question from administration. What is, I mean, we never have done such a project except maybe for the, the soccer park. What would be the best way to kind of define? Because I think this is what's difficult for us, is the responsibilities are not defined.
Well, it's just preliminary. You know, we're so-
No, no, but I, I know-
I don't know the right answer to that, Mayor. This is a project where, and I'm not, I don't want this to come off as a condescending thing. It's a project where we're going to take on a lot more risk than we normally would in a traditional contractual obligation. We simply, if this is how we're going forward, we have to be prepared to understand that. So cost overruns, liabilities, all those things, we're taking them on. There's not a prime contractor up there that will take them all on. And so I've got to get my head around that a little bit. And I'm not really sure, I don't know that the, I don't know that the Pickleball Association wants to be the, the lead on it either as an association. You know, it's a little different than Delbert and I agree with you. It's a little bit of a different request from the other party there. But I, I don't know the perfect answer for that right now, Mayor. I'm not sure.
Maybe it needs to be explored a little bit so that we understand a little bit how to, how to tighten the parameters of responsibility, uh, legal responsibility, et cetera, because honestly, sooner or later-
Well, we'll have to be the prime contractor. That's, unless some large firm comes in and takes this thing over, we're going to be the prime contractor and we'll be responsible for everything on site, for sure.
Because even with volunteers, there has to be a liability coverage of some sorts. They're doing work. They could be hurt. How do we deal with that?
And we have insurances in place for volunteers now. I'd have to check, you know, the precise parameters of that. But we have some of that in place already.
So what I would suggest too is that, Jeff, maybe that's the conversation that you and Brandon as part of the, here's your numbers, Gibb, explain them to us. And what's your expectation and what's our expectation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That way I'm not the middleman anymore with this.
Yeah, absolutely.
You getting tired of that?
Yeah, I'm kind of tired of getting squeezed.
Okay. I just have that I'll talk with numbers and expectations with Brandon and Gibb. The other thing here is just, once, once the scale of the facility is defined, which it, I'm hoping we are now, we're going to go ahead with this, then we start to put together what that annual operating looks like, right? And that's more difficult in some ways because I don't know the extent of the programming that's going into this thing. And what none of us really do thoroughly yet. That's to be developed. We don't know the position of the school division and the financial contribution, for example. We just don't know. But at some point, as part of this whole due diligence, we have to get some indication, some markers of operational costs, right?
Right.
Because for every hundred thousand, you're talking about four percent of taxation for every hundred thousand in law. Some two point eight million, that's maybe a little bit high, but somewhere in that area, okay? So we have to just start to get that defined a little bit.
Yeah. And this one, I'll be honest, Mayor, it's a little bit like nailing Jell-O to the well at this point in time. Because, you know, we've had conversations that Counselor Brown and I have had with Kurtz and Support Services. You know, and it's been, would some of your clients be willing to help out with some of the, you know, indoor cleaning and different things in order for you to have use of the building? You know, and there seems to be some receptive thoughts there. And, uh, yeah, you know, maybe, maybe we do go back to the well and Counselor Brown makes a pitch to Westwind School Division and I'll cheer you on. And, and maybe we come to a different understanding with them where, you know, like we can pitch the, what's the benefit of them partnering with us on this facility? What's the benefit to them?
Okay.
What's the benefit to us?
Okay, so that's an interesting point because up to now, if we understand properly, Gibb went and pitched.
No, Lloyd went and pitched. Lloyd Clark went and pitched.
I thought Gibb pitched first.
He pitched to the county. Okay, we're in the bullpen now.
He pitched the county, yeah.
So Gibb pitched to the county out of the bullpen and Lloyd pitched to the Westwind School Division.
Okay, I thought, I thought the two of them had done that.
No.
Okay. And both of them didn't get the answer we really truly wanted?
Well, we don't, Gibb got an assurance that the county was interested in participating. Just, they didn't settle on a number yet. Lloyd got, yeah, no, we're not interested from the Westwind School Division.
Because, because if I can-
Yeah.
Because there's nothing in this building from, it's my understanding, how it was pitched, there was nothing in the building that they would be interested in running programming for. So we think that maybe somehow there was- So we think that maybe somehow there was a miscommunication as to, because like Counselor Silk said, this has been evolving. And a lot of things have changed since that original uh pitch. So we want to make sure that Westwind School Division understands clearly what. Ideas we're thinking about having, you know, the courts, that all that, that that is fully understood because. It's my understanding, hearing from some of the counselors that sat at that table, was that it was gonna be pickleball courts. And that's pretty much it. That was, that was their understanding and so. I, I think it's important for them to understand, this isn't a pickleball building that the town of Cardston is building. Why would we do that? That's not what this is. It's much more than that.
It's not exclusively for pickleball. It has so many other facets to it. So that needs to be pitched to them.
Correct.
From a pro- programming perspective so that they understand it's an additional gymnasium right across the street from the high school, yeah. And, and all that other stuff that's right across from the high school because you don't have enough gym space.
Do they know that? Do they?
They say that. They're saying that right now.
No.
So why wouldn't I see the benefit then?
Cause they're thinking pickleball courts.
And we're talking basketball, pickleball.
Baseball, you can.
Yeah.
Baseball and everything else, so.
Who is saying that? Like you say, they're saying that. I want to know who they, like at the school division.
So that was the understanding that um Dr. Clark took away from the meeting.
With, with the school principal?
I think it was pitched like it was primarily a pickleball and.
Need more.
The idea was, it needed to be evolved into, no, it's a rec center.
We're, we're going down the wrong.
I understand what you're saying. Some of the people that were some of the counselors that sat at the table is what I can say.
You're saying that they are saying they don't have enough.
Sorry, Westwind School Division is saying they're short on gyms.
Okay.
Sorry, I'll be clear. Yes.
Whoever.
Westwind School Division is saying.
Is that Peter or is that?
High school, high school, Ken McMurray.
Okay.
My teachers are saying because they didn't have a gym time for their grade nine, Counselor Silk, basketball, volleyball.
Both.
Yeah, they just, they don't have the gym time.
Oh.
Didn't, didn't you?
They have to ship them up to the junior.
Didn't you do that?
Well, I just mentioned I coached grade nine basketball last year and that wasn't the case. It was whatever we wanted, whenever we wanted. So I didn't, I didn't see that last year when I coached them.
You were out of the high school?
Yeah, yeah, we had all the time at the high school. There was no problems at all, but whether it's volleyball.
Full gyms there.
Yeah, they just invested heavily in their two full gyms there, so.
I got nothing. I only know with what they said.
Okay, we'll chalk that one up to.
Look into.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'm trying to get us to eight thirty being done this portion of the meeting. We have two items in closed session, so. Real quick, uh, just, I, I put in here because it's come up, do we want to have one more conversation about location? And I'm not trying to make it really complicated, just for the sheer opportunity cost of the site. What I mean is. I know the EJ Wood's been gone for twenty years and there's not a four-story condo sitting on that site. I get it. But as far as prime location for large residential real estate development in proximity to the temple, it's the only place. So you look at potential taxation of that development or the potential taxation burden of a recreation facility. And you have quite a substantial annual oppo- uh, opportunity cost, which I don't know the number, but it compounds the opportunity cost. So I, when we were talking in the office, we were just saying, do we want to look at that? One more time based on potential opportunity cost of the site.
I mean, there is something to be said about the proximity to the temple. Whatever we're going to put on that location should have a curb appeal. Should be fitting within the decor that is around it. That should have some kind of something there. Wouldn't you say so?
Ideally, yes.
I mean, it should be.
Should be.
Can I, can I, I appreciate what you're saying. I appreciate what you're saying. Here's the thing. I can't really play pickleball in an open field, which is really what that is. And I can't play basketball in an open field and I can't walk up there in the wintertime. So I would rather have a facility than no facility. And I think that we've all sort of determined through conversations with various people that. A central location is probably preferred. Now, this kind of leads to something that you've. Talked about here in terms of public consultation and. Um, I'll just be candid and throw it out there. The Pickleball Association is kind of endeavor to conduct their own survey. Randomly phoning people saying, what do you think about this? What do you think is uh something that you might use in there? We have these things that we're contemplating. Would you use this, this, or this, or nothing at all?
Personally, I would prefer to be absolutely neutral to the benefit of all. I pre- I would truly prefer to be done uh with as much. Of uh the statistical. Tools that are given to do proper surveys. Because I think if we do that, we could ask all those same questions. But we could have an arm-length relationship regarding. That survey and we would know it would be ninety-five percent. True. We would not know the same thing if it's done by a private group that has a vested interest. In, in a facility when taxpayer money are going to be there. For at least half of the total cost. I think due diligence on that one is an important one. I really do believe if you want to get the best outcome. And if, if it's explained properly, if you really intend to build it without tax burden. Uh, for capital cost and a minimal tax burden for operation. I think you could be surprised, you could have more support that maybe you think you could get. But I think by doing it that way, you could be fully transparent, fully accountable. And then get the population behind that project and move it forward if that's their wish.
So. Basically, you wouldn't trust anything they brought forward because there's bias.
I would say.
Even if they.
Do it at arm-length, no.
If it's random.
You know, the same way, the same way as I would not go and volunteer to do the survey. Even if it was random and none of us should.
All right. I don't, I don't like talking to people that much.
Well, but no, but that's good, but I mean.
Except you. Cause we seem to have a long conversation.
Yeah, every so often we do, don't we? But I, I really honestly, let, let a third party do that random. Testing is three hundred fifty. Jeff, is that the number?
And I did look, I, I put it based on population, but really what we're looking for is households.
Right.
Right? So that drops it down to, I think, two ninety, by the way.
Two ninety, okay. So let's do that random, let's see what comes out of it. And at least we'll be able to have that base number and that base result, I may say, yes, there is support.
Well, and we got a lot of work to get to there first, right? Because we don't know what we're telling them as far as impact.
We need to understand the capital cost, we need to understand the operational cost.
So we got a little.
Minimum number you want to hear it back from and a minimum number.
Well, Jeff, just say based on household is two hundred ninety.
Reliability with a five percent margin of error.
Right.
Um, it's two hundred ninety households or three hundred fifty people.
Households.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not going to take a long time for people to, to do that. And let's have volunteers that are totally at arm lengths do it. And honestly, if we do that, we will show that we're transparent and we're accountable. No one could ever fault this council for that.
Okay, good. We're done with number three, public consultation.
Thank you.
I just want to back up one to uh the revenue sources again. So again, getting all those partners on side, but do. So one thing I don't know, the request from the county, because we just don't know, was there a capital and operational piece? And do we bring this up as part of ICF?
Okay, so that's an interesting point.
Percentage.
Right.
Do we try and ask them, okay, we've determined that we anticipate operational cost to be X?
Right.
Will you adjust the annual contribution by that amount? I, I don't know.
So what I don't really know, and maybe Counselor Silk, you can give us maybe a better answer because. You may have had that conversation with Gibb. When the pitch was pitched at the county, what was pitched? Was that for capital or was capital and operation? Do we know?
I believe it was just capital.
Okay.
To begin with. And it was pitched on the notion that. It wasn't, it was Gibb and members of the Pickleball Association and it was sort of brought to their attention that. Fifty percent of the people that are using the town's current facility, the tennis court or the. Ice rink when it was available, where fifty percent of the people using it were from the county. So, but anyway, it's.
Okay, so here I have another question for you. Maybe you want to divulge it, maybe you don't. Do you have a sense? With your pickleball association, how many people are from the county versus the town?
About fifty percent.
About fifty percent? Okay.
So I think again, until we start establishing budgets for operations, we can't really pursue this too aggressively anyway.
Yeah, no, I think, I think Jeff, in answer to your question, it would probably behoove us to approach the county. With the, say, you know, in light of this, the fact that we have a new facility on the horizon. You know, what's your appetite? I think it would behoove us to at least ask the question.
Okay, so as a follow-up to that, should we then as council. Direct administration to write a letter to county on our behalf to really understand their position?
Again, I don't have operational costs to tell them, so they're gonna say you're looking for ten thousand or a hundred thousand. We just don't know.
Absolutely, I absolutely appreciate what you're saying, Jeff.
Yeah.
But in time to come, when it's firmed up, would that be a fair thing to direct you to do for us?
I, I think you should, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, one on the public consultation, sorry, Counselor Silk, I got one thing on there. Is there any role for the previous rec facility ad hoc committee? We, we struck a committee, you guys worked with them quite a bit, and then this kind of went from a different angle and we haven't engaged them at all in this project. Do we thank them for their service and tell them it's been a slice or do we. Reengage them on this scale of the facility? That's what I'm curious about.
If they're going to do fundraising?
Well, but this is a different group.
No, this is different.
Yeah, so this was the original ad hoc exploration group.
Oh.
I think we should perhaps have one. Maybe there'll, there'll be further ones, but I think we should have another meeting with the ad hoc committee and say. What do you think? And maybe it will be, thank you for your service, here's where we're going, or maybe it'll be. Can you help with some of the fundraising? Can, you know, maybe they can go at it as a group as well.
Counselor Brown?
Cause quite a few of them are helping out with this already, like, that sat on that board, like, you know. Brad Beazer, he's helping us. We've got Gibb, we've got um.
Counselor Quentin.
Counselor Quentin, same with, we've got Dean Summerfeld, like all of those people are still. A big part of this and they were the ad hoc committee. But I do think it's a great idea actually, and I appreciate that it was brought up, to get back together with them. And now that we have this, it sounds like we're a little bit more solidified in this. I think it's a great idea. To bring it up with them, because they did get the ball rolling.
So you were sitting on that committee?
Counselor Silk and myself, yes.
Right.
We can just call, get another meeting called.
You can call them?
Great idea. Yeah.
Okay. The other section was just kind of miscellaneous stuff that didn't fit anywhere. Um, so is this, you know, it's a large steel building, is that the appropriate aesthetic? We talked about this in location, which we can talk about more. Um, I'm actually meeting with EBA Engineering on Thursday to talk about hole sixteen at the golf course and they also did coring of that hill. A few years ago, so I'm gonna just ask them to review that again and give us a, just a letter saying, you know, based on this, we feel it's a suitable location for development, that kind of a thing. Um, I'm talking to Mark on Thursday afternoon, parking considerations. Um, we'll have to work through a little bit. A building of this size requires under the land use bylaw, I think, a little over a hundred parking spots. Um, there, there's not room for that. And so we have to look at. How to accommodate that on the hill and off-street and those kind of things, so we'll work through that. Um, the daycare drop-off again, we don't need to sort this out tonight, but if there's staffing or licenses or insurances, I just don't know.
It's not a daycare.
No.
Right, but somebody's leaving kids with somebody.
Well.
Possibly.
I think the simplest thing to do is just erase the whole daycare notion out of our mind and just say it's flex space.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be an, an area and like Gibb and I talked about it today and, you know, in. The way he's envisioning it is what we talked about before. We have a hockey tournament, we have teams come to town, they have no place to hang out. We tell them, we have a flex space at the rec center where you can go and hang out till your next game.
Rent it.
Yeah. You know, whatever. And so, you know, it could be, it could be where a group of moms get together and say, okay, I'll look after the kids while you go and. And then you come back and the next day, I get to go and do whatever and you look after my kid. So that's.
Okay, that's fine. Okay?
Well, not a daycare, at, at best it's a stay-in-place, something like that.
I like what you first called it.
Flex space.
I like.
That's what I put in the notes there. Um, and then just lastly, again, very basic, there was some brief talk on coupling this with residential development. Are we exploring that in this, let's call it stage one in the early stages? Or is that something that let this thing get done and up and open and then we talk about it? Or do we want to look at accommodating residential development early on?
Is that spaceable?
That's, that's an interesting question now that you told me what the requirements are for parking.
Yeah, it's, it's tight. Brandon did look at this for me. He said that you could put some very small, like condominium style lots on there. Which are pretty small. And so.
Pretty small though, like, sorry. Like, is it forty, forty by?
I, I'd have to see for sure. He just said they were, they were quite undersized. So they'd have to be kind of smaller units, but we just have to look at that.
Okay.
So why are we required a hundred parking spots when high schools aren't?
Well, I don't know what the high schools require. They've got two or three different parking lots there.
I've ever been to in the last coaching years, none of them had a hundred parking spots.
Not sure.
Maybe new.
Just wonder if there's a different rule for.
Yeah, there's just in the land use bylaw, based on your square footage and potential occupancy.
That our land use bylaw?
Yeah, it's our land use bylaw.
We can change that.
Yeah. So just something that came up. Yeah. Okay, that's everything I had on that list.
Except for the churches, you don't have a hundred parks. As far as the aesthetics though.
Yeah.
I will say this. Yeah, I think we don't want just, you know. It's going to depend on how much money is raised.
That wants it.
Well, it's a galvanized steel building right now. The manufacturer is what it is.
I know.
And that's.
But there are things you can't. Not gonna use the lipstick then. There are things you can do to make it look aesthetically pleasing.
Like Duchess. Duchess had a beautiful facade.
I'll talk to Rock on it, a lot of things you can do.
You know, there's things you could do, like Counselor Court said, rock on the front.
Yeah, I mean, something that finishes it.
Yeah.
You know, again, we don't want to commit to anything beyond what we can afford. And so we're saying, let's try to keep it this, but you know, when you talk to. Some of the guys at the pickleball, well, what if we raise this much money? Can we do this? We can do lots of things if you raise lots of money. Otherwise, it's. A standard building that can be used for multiple things, but you have to raise the money for what's inside and what it looks like on the outside.
But there is something in our land use bylaw that requires a certain amount of aesthetic looks from businesses. What would be so different from a public facility?
Well, I'm not suggesting there is any difference. I'm just throwing out.
That's what I'm saying.
Inconsistent with the community, or the neighborhood, I should say, that's the better word.
There is, there is.
Is it a town shop then?
That, that portion is in the land use bylaw as it stands.
Okay, that's a fair question. And I think what Counselor Court's referring to is aesthetics is probably in the eye of the beholder.
Uh, yes.
It is.
You're totally right, but it's something that is fitting with what's around there, right? Because it enhances the value of things.
Okay, so my thought here is we'll just kind of keep this list developing a bit living over time. We'll bring it back to every meeting. Okay, we know this now, we know this, still this is outstanding, this is outstanding and, and work through it. Um, and leave it at that for now.
Can I just make one last recommendation? I can promise you that as soon as I get home, I'm gonna get a phone call.
Yeah, you are.
So I'm just gonna tell Gibb, yeah, go talk to Jeff and Brandon.
Sure, that's fine.
Fair. Fair.
I, I think.
Thank you for your phone call.
I think it's a very wise move.
That's fine.
I think it's creating an awful lot of burden on, on your shoulders, and you don't need it.
That way it's not the middleman.
And it's difficult when, when Gibb is your good friend.
I just figured I should just stay out of the middleman part for one.
Well, I think for your own sake, it's not a bad idea. All right, so, thank you so much for all that. I'm, I'm sure there will be a lot.
Eight thirty?
Yeah.
I'm gonna be there at three, right?
Yeah, you need to hold your organizational meeting by eight thirty, for sure.
Extend this to eight thirty, so.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion to extend to eight thirty.
Thank you, all in favor? All right, let's go and try to go through the rest of the business. A committee, another report, Jeff was not busy this past month.
Did you wear running shoes to work, or something?
It's just been a weird year, there's been no quiet time, nothing.
No.
Cool, but.
Yeah, it's been really weird.
It could hardly still a day here and a day there to go and.
That's created a lot of.
Decompress a little.
Yeah, it's been bizarre.
Okay.
You could just tell people that the walking track is around your desk.
Yeah, that's right.
So there are a certain amount of committee report, and thank you all for sending them in. Uh, I have some question on some of them, but maybe due to time, maybe I will bring them back at the next meeting.
I would like to talk about one aspect of my report.
Okay, do you want to go ahead?
The very end where Mayor Painter from Crowesness Pass talked to herself with me, explaining how they tax the hotels, the campgrounds and stuff, an extra couple of percent, and he says, that brings in quite a bit of income, and it really doesn't hurt that much at two percent, but it, it gives, it's, you know, it's a tourism tax.
No, I totally understand what you're saying, we don't have the, definitely not the number of hotel and motel.
No, we don't.
That have in Crowesness, but.
But every little bit helps, and I'm.
I think, I think what should be done is maybe to talk to the different operat- operators of the campground, the motels, and try to figure out what their appetite for adding two percent. Let's try to get at least their opinion on that one.
Campgrounds.
It's, it's an interesting story, Calgary does it, Edmonton does it, many, many towns do it right now, because it's, it's an ability for municipality to ra- raise a little bit more money.
Yeah.
In our case, wouldn't give us tons, but it's worthwhile exploring.
Mm-hmm.
So if you want to make a recommendation to ask administration to contact the operators that would be involved.
I'd love to make that recommendation, that the administration look into contacting the operators.
For the two percent tourism tax. Local tourism tax, because there's already a provincial tourism tax.
Yeah.
Well, he'll have a tough time getting in touch with the operator of the campground, I know, that's.
Yeah, I'm sure. Okay, all in favor? I think it's not a bad thing to have, okay. Uh, development report, you can see there is a little bit more development than the past years, not a bad thing, I appreciate that, the real estate was not a bad year this year, Counselor Barnes, we understand that, too.
Been a very good year, but it hasn't been, not an awful lot of industrial stuff, but it's been a good year residential.
Residential.
County.
Very, very busy.
Yeah. Okay, correspondence, old man, watershed council, a report where they cut many trees to be able to show us a lot of pictures. Honestly, for conservation, I would say.
Sass.
Sorry about that, I couldn't, I couldn't resist.
Really, too?
Okay, ten B, Bloom.
Are you saying the trees would have stopped the watershed? Loaded down?
The roots are very important. Okay, ten B, Bloom Education, educational opportunities for councilors, if you are interested in that, you can go and register. Ten C, Minister Tracy Allen.
As COVID.
An update and assess, as COVID unfortunately, and with prompt recovery, it's no fun to have the disease. An update on the assessment changes, you could see all the changes that happened, what has me concerned is that when assessment go down, revenue go down, somebody has to pick